You do look smarter. That's almost impossible for you to look smarter, Jim. Okay, the time is 5:30 PM. This meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We are now going to conduct our budget hearing on 1718 budget and proposed tax rates. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to you, Dr. Dupree.
And I will turn it right on over to our finance team, Steve Bassett, our CFO, Dean Edgar, our executive director, and Brian Gwynne, our budget officer.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Dupree, Mr. Tassan, members of the board. We are bringing the budget to you tonight in form of our public meeting. So after just introducing everything here, Dean is going to set the stage for Brian. She's going to give you a little bit of a legislative update and talk through what's changed since the last time we met. And then Brian's going to get into the meat of the presentation with regard to the general fund. And then I'm going to follow up after that with child nutrition and debt service and close it out. So, Dean?
Okay. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Dupree, Board of Trustees. So as Steve mentioned, this evening, we'll be reviewing the proposed budget for 1718, and it'll be a focus on the general fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition fund. We'll also review our proposed tax rate, which will not be adopted until September, and that will be adopted when we receive our certified property values from the Central Appraisal District, and that happens in July. So since this is a public hearing, I think it's important to recognize that the budget's being adopted within the requirements established by the Texas Education Code and the Texas Education Agency. The superintendent is the budget officer for the district, and he must direct the budget to be prepared by June 19th each year and adopted by June 30th. And that's for districts that are on a July 1 fiscal year. We have complied with all the publication requirements and the formatting prescribed by law. Okay, so the 1718 proposed general fund budget totals $633.3 million, and with our projected enrollment of 75,355 students, our budget per student is $8,405. So in reviewing the numbers at a high level, the first column represents what was presented to the board at the May 8th board meeting. And this was based on assumptions coming out of the 85th legislative session. As the session closed with impasse between the House and the Senate, we didn't realize the addition revenues that we had been modeling, and that resulted in a decrease of $8.5 million in anticipated state aid. So as a result, we're asking the board to approve utilization of previously committed fund balance to close the gap and balance the budget, and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that a little bit later on. The most significant change between the May meeting and the proposed version this evening is the failure of House Bill 21, and that was initiated by the House. It would have infused $1.85 billion of new money into public education. The Senate later eliminated half that funding and tacked on a voucher program and essentially became a voucher bill, and that was subsequently rejected by the House. The House version of House Bill 21 would have provided, again, $8.5 million of new revenue in the form of state aid to the district, and that revenue was not realized. However, the increase to the Austin yield was in current law, and that was pretty substantial, and we were able to get that. Again, current law. Okay, so during the 2015-16 budget development cycle, the board had the foresight to prepare for situations of this nature, and they voted to commit $7.5 million to a district economic stabilization reserve in the event of an economic downturn or a situation of this nature. This economic stabilization commitment is above and beyond the board's policy to maintain a 90-day reserve for fund balance. And this is as a result of the legislative session. We're now recommending to increase the stabilization commitment to $14 million at this fiscal year-end, and then utilize $11.96 million to balance the 1718 budget. And again, Brian will get into a little bit more detail about what that looks like. So the big news is last Tuesday Governor Abbott held a press conference to announce a special session to begin July 18th. Special sessions do have constitutional limitations of 30 days, and the only issues that can be addressed during a special session are those that are on the governor's call. There's no limit, however, to the number of special sessions the governor can call. So the last time a special session was called was in 2013 by Governor Perry, and in that year, he issued three special sessions. So on Governor Abbott's call this time are 19 topics, so the media is calling it the 85th 2.0. Steve loves that term. So they'll first pass the sunset legislation that'll keep several critical state agencies open. And then there's seven topics in particular that are important to public education and taxpayers, and those are highlighted in bold. The first issue that the governor wants addressed in relation to public education is a mandatory pay raise for classroom teachers of $1,000. And it's important to note that he stated there will be no state funding associated with that pay increase, and he expects it to come out of existing school budgets. He also listed that he wants increased administrative flexibility in the hiring and retention of staff. He wants a school finance reform commission appointed, and that's similar to Senate Bill 2144 that was initiated during the regular session. The commission would study school finance system in the interim and then bring recommendations in the next legislative session. He listed vouchers for students with special needs, property tax reform, and creating new caps on both state and local spending so that it restricts growth to the growth of population and inflation. And finally, he's reintroduced his bathroom bill. Okay, so as we move forward, our strategies do not assume any assistance coming out of special session. Instead, we're prepared to utilize our internal teams, our budget and compensation committee, our resource allocation teams, teacher forums, principal meetings, and we're going to make strategic adjustments targeting some very high impact areas immediately so that we'll see results even in the 1718 budget cycle. And at this time, I'll hand it over to Brian, and he'll speak in more detail about the general fund and our fund balance strategies.
Thank you, Deana, and good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. One of the things that Deana did not mention is that the unofficial Latin phrase that we are utilizing to discuss these strategies going forward is semper Gumby. And Gumby would be that claymation character that you may or may not fondly remember from the past, and since he is clay, he's flexible, so we're looking to be always flexible as we go through this process. So I would point out that small oversight on her part, I'm sure that she is not well-versed in Latin like I am, and please don't anyone tell my Latin teacher, which I never had.
I didn't think it was going to be that nice.
But with that, I will begin the process of the budget. For the 1718 proposed budget and the general fund, we are looking at total revenues of $619.9 million. Of that, $392 million will be coming from local revenues, $218.7 from state revenues, and just right at $9 million from federal revenues. And as you can see, the allocation of our revenues is shifting more towards the local side as we've previously discussed. We'll have about 63% of our revenues coming from local revenues at this point. One of the other important things to mention is this does include the effects of the tax swap and drop, and we are picking up about $16 million additional dollars in the general fund from that action. So that is included in the numbers that you see here in front of you. On the expenditure side, as Deana mentioned, our total expenditures are at $633.3 million. I'm not going to go through each individual one of these major functions where we expend the funds, but I will point out that in the instruction and instruction-related services area, we're spending 61.2% of our total expenditures. That's where those will be made, and that includes instructional resources, media, instruction itself, as well as curriculum. So the bulk of our funding will be spent in the instruction area, and this is in line with what we expended in this current fiscal year. We were right at 62%, so we haven't changed dramatically from this fiscal year to the next fiscal year. The same number repeated for the budget is $63.3 million. This is showing how it's broken down from a category expenditure perspective. You'll see that 87.7% of our expenditures are on salary and benefits. That works out to about $555 million. The remaining expenditures that we have would be broken out between items like electricity, supplies, and materials that are purchased to support campuses, et cetera. So as you're well aware, the bulk of our expenditures occur on the salary and benefits side. For the ending of 1617 and comparing that to the proposed budget that's before you this evening, you'll see that our revenues are increasing by about $22 million, with the majority of that additional revenue coming from the local revenues. That would be, again, from the 6% increase in local values from property taxes, as well as the effects of the tax swap and drop. On the expenditure side, we're looking at about $36 million in additional expenditures. That $36 million is made up of the items that the board has previously considered, and that includes the teacher and principal increases, the additional teachers for the new elementary schools opening, as well as staff that's being added as a result of growth from student enrollment. And then that also includes the paying increases for the non-teaching staff as well, and those together total right at $36 million. In addition to that, you'll notice that there is $1.5 million from other sources. That is a transfer to the general fund from the extending learning program, so that program is an enterprise-type operation, and we do realize about $1.5 million in additional revenue from that. So that's shown there. And then, as Dean mentioned, we are recommending that we utilize $11.9 million from the economic stabilization and the designated fund balance to bring the budget to a balanced point for 2017-18. That's reflected here. So at the end of 1718, we would be looking at a drawdown of fund balance going from $183.99 million to $172.03 million. To go into a little more detail on the fund balance, I believe this was also a question raised by Ms. James in the budget, so I'll walk through this, and then I have a little more detail on the next slide. But as I mentioned, we're anticipating ending with a total fund balance of $183.99 million. What that is made up of is committed balance is $34.44 million, which we're asking the board to take action on that later this evening. But $34.4, I'll go into that detail in just a moment. State revenue stabilization is $49.4 million, and then the unassigned balance is $101.5 million. Those two numbers added together make up $149.55 million. That is what our fund balance requirement is, and you'll notice that our actual 90-day reserve requirement is $148.16. So we are ending the year above our fund balance requirement. And I will mention, when I get to the next slide, that included in that $34.4 million is the $14 million in economic stabilization. So as Deana mentioned, this is funds that are above and beyond what we are required to keep in the bank. So this is our additional safety net, so we are not utilizing that 90-day fund balance policy requirement. But to quickly go through the fund balance strategies that we have set aside, there is a total of $34.4 million included, and that is $2.9 million for non-spendables. These are essentially inventories and prepaid that are not necessarily reflected. It's accounting geek speak, if you will. On the major maintenance side, we're recommending that that amount be maintained at $6.4 million for instructional materials, $2.7 million. And then previously, we had set aside for transportation $1.5 million. This was a contingency for the Gold Star contract. However, now that we are a year and a half into that contract, we are well aware of what the budgetary impact of that is, and we do not believe that we need that any longer. And we're recommending that that be reallocated from transportation into economic stabilization. So it's a reallocation of those funds into economic stabilization. Our new instructional facilities is $4.5 million. This would be for the upcoming opening of Thornton Middle School, as well as the Reece CTE Center. Those are the funds set aside for that. And then finally, the assigned fund balance of $3.9 million. This is set aside each year for POs that are opened in the current fiscal year but are not completed prior to fiscal year-end. So we roll those purchase orders into the next fiscal year so that they can be completed, and we also have to roll the budget associated with that. So that is what is reflected in the assigned fund balance. And I believe that was also a question from one of the board members of what makes up that amount, and it is the open POs that are not completed prior to year-end. For our long-term outlook, we have prepared an outlook through fiscal year 2020, and I'll show you what that looks like in just a moment. Briefly, to cover what is included in that, for revenue growth at this point, we're now modeling a 5% local value growth, as well as for CPTD. And as we've said before, any swing, minor swing, in any of these variables has a tremendous impact. And just to give you an idea, a 1% change in CPTD or local value has an impact of $7 or $8 million either way. So these are tremendously large swings, so when we deal with this, unfortunately, it's not a small amount, and even though we're conservative, sometimes this does have a negative impact, as we saw this year. Again, with ADA, that's another area where if a 1% change can result in about a $4.7 million swing, so we'd like to point that out. On the expenditure side, the assumptions that I'm going to show you, the only new items that we've included in the budget are the operations for the CTE Center. We've also modeled what it would look like if we were to open Elementary 51, although that's not a foregone conclusion, but we wanted to show what that would look like if we were to do that. We have not included any raises in this number, so if we wanted to maintain that strategy going forward, we did want to show that for each 1% that we do in the general fund, that equates to about $5.6 million in additional costs. So if we were to do a 2% increase, that would be about $11.2 million. And then again, as I mentioned, there are no other changes to M&amp;O costs, and I point that out because any inflationary cost increases that we see, such as additional seats added for our enterprise resource program, we would have to find a way of making that work within the existing confines of the budget. That is not included in these numbers that I'm about to show you. So looking forward to 2020, this begins with how we anticipate ending this year with about a $1.5 million surplus, an ending fund balance of $183.9 million. If we carry our assumptions forward, and this is with no corrective actions being taken, and we're well aware of the fact that we cannot sustain a budget like this, but we're just showing this, as I would say, estateris paribus, all things equal, if we were to keep things as they are, in fiscal year 2020, we would be looking at about a $13 million deficit. But again, as Deana pointed out, we recognize we will have to take action, working with principal groups, teacher groups, the Budget and Compensation Committee. We'll be bringing those recommendations forward to the board in short order so that we can take action to cover that deficit that we have and make sure that when we come to you next year in 1819, we are bringing a balanced budget for your consideration. And with that, I'll turn it over to Steve, and he can finish out the thoughts as well as the presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, so switching gears to child nutrition. Right now, we're showing a breaking even in 1617 and 1718 for the child nutrition fund. In looking at this, now that I've been responsible for child nutrition a little bit more than a year, we're going to be working to increase participation, and so some of the targets that we have in there to improve participation aren't in here, so I'm hoping that we'll end 1718 with a real positive to bring the fund balance up even a little bit higher. And so one thing also that's good to report on the child nutrition, right now, we're projecting our free and reduced percentage to actually eclipse the 40% range, which does, from a big perspective, does really help us from a general fund revenue perspective. But we knew that those numbers were out there, and remember when we had the collection issues with our cafeteria balances, and a lot of folks just weren't paying. We did turn things around. We have ending balances this year of just around $50,000, as opposed to what it was going to be of over $300,000 the year before. But more importantly, folks out there that really do need the help, it seems like they are getting the help. They are signing up. They're going through the process to sign up for free and reduced. So it helps us from a financial perspective, but more importantly, it has a massive impact to our accountability ratings. You know, if you're looking at the accountability ratings, and when they get modified for the free and reduced percentages, instead of being in the mid-30s to go up and eclipse 40, it really does help us from an accountability perspective. So anyway, we'll be looking for that in the future. From a debt service perspective, you can see the numbers here. We're expecting to have a surplus in the current year of about just over $6 million. And then in 1718, what we're proposing, based on the debt that we have in place, we're expecting to have a change in fund balance of just over $11 million. And so this will put us in good shape from a fund balance perspective of being able to manage our tax rate in the future, given the reduction in the tax rate that we're proposing. This does show, if you look at the revenue decrease from 105 to 97.7, this does reflect the four fewer pennies. Okay? So that is baked into these numbers. If you look at what was published, we have this portion of the public notice that was published with regard to the assessed value of our residences, the average taxable value of the residence is going up just over 5% to $253,000. And so because we do have that 5% increase there, even with the decrease in the tax rate, overall tax rate from $1.34 down to $1.32, the percentage change in terms of what our average tax rate will be spending on a monthly basis is going to increase by So next week, we'll be asking the board to adopt the budget, make approval for the final amendment, and also the fund balance resolution with the parameters that Brian just spoke about. We'll be doing bond remarketing and also talking about a bond refunding in the July-August timeframe, Chapter 41 selection. And then, as Deana mentioned earlier, we're going to be adopting the tax rate in September, and we'll have the budget amendment that we always have in September. We'll have that at that time. And probably, if there is anything to react to from the budget with regard to the special session, we'll react to that at the September amendment. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett, Mr. Gwynne, and Ms. Edgar. We appreciate that. It was very thorough. Do we have questions or comments from the board first? Mr. Rice?
Well, my question is, where are all the outraged parents? I don't see any here. And so I would like to ask you, Dr. Dupree, if we can have, other than Mrs. Tasson, we need to have a way of educating our community on where we are with this budget. So I would just like to say thank you for this presentation and go over a couple of things. House Bill 21, as you pointed out, would have provided $8.5 million in revenues to Fort Bend ISD. That didn't pass, and so we're ending up, are we ending up with a $13 million shortfall? Is that what it is roughly?
Just under $11 million.
$11 million. Now...
Make sure your microphone's on, Steve.
And it's my understanding, I heard you say that Governor Abbott has given every teacher in Texas a $1,000 raise, but he wants us to fund it? So if we have 5,000 teachers, roughly, at $1,000 each, that's $5 million. Is that included in this budget?
That additional amount isn't included. The key will be how the bill is written. I mean, we're anticipating, because there is no funding associated with this, that if districts have already given a raise in excess of $1,000, that an additional one wouldn't be required. The last time that the state did mandate an increase, and it was a $3,000 amount, there was funding associated with that.
Okay, but my question is, I'm not understanding what you're telling me.
Okay.
The extra $5 million is not included in the budget. Is that, yes, is that correct?
If we have to give $1,000 more than we've already allocated to the teachers, above the $2,500 that we've already given to the teachers or put into the budget, then no, that $5 million, if we have to do an additional $1,000, is not in this budget. That's correct.
Do we have any type of indication or reading from the governor or the Senate on if they're going to make us give an additional $1,000 over what's already been given?
We don't have any new information on that yet. I'm going to, I'm going to be in Austin Thursday at the first Texas School Alliance meeting that we've had since the legislative session has ended and since the special session has been called. So hopefully, I'll learn more then.
Okay. And I know that, I know the governor's called the legislature back into session. Some of the bills, I think, doesn't Texas have 26 million people in it? Isn't it the second most populous state in the Union? And every day, I hear the governor and the lieutenant governor talking about how great we are and how many people are moving here, and yet we're ready to sunset the Texas Medical Board? I mean, isn't that kind of an important board? Might we not need that coming up? And now the bathroom bill's been tied to that. You know, I was in Austin in February with my peers, with 300 other trustees from all over the state, and Senator Royce West asked, who wants to talk about the bathroom bill? And nobody raised their hand. I guess that's because Lois Cole-Corst and Dan Patrick weren't there. But none of the trustees wanted to talk about that. They had other, more important things to talk about than the bathroom bill, something that we deal with every day on a low-key basis, and we don't need the lieutenant governor or the governor or Senator Cole-Corst to tell us how to do that. And I hope that the tape is working and the audio is working, because I want to make sure, if they want to hear what I have to say, that it comes across very clear. So we've got to make up $12 million. And this year, let me jump ahead. So our fund balance, can you go to page 13, please?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm just gonna, this is, page 13 shows the fund balance at a high level. We have a committed fund balance of $34.44 million, which you, I'll go over that in a minute. State revenue stabilization, now, where's that name come from?
That's something we created a few years ago when we were splitting out the 90-day requirement between 60 days being unassigned fund balance and 30 days being a fund that we could dedicate to state revenue stabilization in case we're in a situation where the state really did have a drastic cut in revenue, similar to what they had in the 2010-2011 timeframe.
Okay, but that's our own rainy day fund?
Yes, sir.
And, well, Mr. Bassett, have you seen the movie Dead Poet Society?
Yes, I have.
And are you familiar with the term Carpe Diem?
Yes, I, yes, sir.
Well, I propose to rename this the Dead Trustees Society, and I want to rename it the Crap DM.
Yes, sir.
And I wish I could claim that I was the originator of that, but I can't. But because to me, that's really what I think it should be called. And then the unassigned fund balance, that's where our 90 days of operation come from.
That's 60 days are in the unassigned, 30 days is in the state revenue stabilization, but in total, between those two, you're correct, that's 90 days.
Okay. So my question is, we've got enough money because, and I know you said this was due to the foresight of the board, but really, it's due to the foresight of you and your team, because you are the ones who have to cut open the economic chicken and look at its entros and divine the future as to what kind of revenue we're going to have, and we shouldn't spend every nickel that we get. And so you're the ones who have recommended that we set this money aside, and the board has acquiesced to that. But we really need your expertise and your team's expertise to help us, because seven laypersons can't effectively plan a $750 million budget overall, and I appreciate you doing that. But am I to understand that for next year, at the end of, I should say, at the end of, well, beginning, we're funding this year's budget, the 2017-18 budget? We have enough money out of our reserves to fund it. But what about next year? I know that, and you've probably said that, and I've missed it somehow.
No, that's okay. Brian didn't speak too much about that. He just showed you what they would be with, you know, all things being equal in terms of 1819. And so, I mean, really, what we anticipate through the actions that we're already talking about in terms of trying to save money, we don't anticipate using $12 million of economic stabilization to have a balanced budget this coming year. We need that to balance the budget, because again, the budget is the authorization to spend. In terms of where we think we'll end the year up, hopefully, we're going to be able to save some of those monies in 1718 timeframe. And so, you know, so that'll help us in that year. There'll be several things that we'll be coming up with that we won't be able to start realizing savings until 1819, because some things just don't turn around that quickly. You know, it takes a little while to turn an aircraft carrier. I mean, we're not a small vessel.
Okay, let me repeat what I heard you tell me. Because we've got to approve this budget and move forward, we have to identify all the funding sources at the moment, and you have done that using the fund... have done that, using the fund balance. Now, throughout the year, you'll be looking for opportunities to save money, and you think that we won't have to spend all $12 million. And we will accrue some savings through efficiencies and so forth.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Okay, I got that. And so going for 2018-19, you've got a projection, the best you can do today. And we won't need to use our dead trustees' economic stabilization fund, because I'm showing a zero, right?
Right. So that's, well, that's if we adopt the budget as is without using any of the funding. We don't know how much will need to be used. Our goal is to not use any of it. But we definitely don't want to go into any of the 90 days that we have set aside, you know, through board policy. And so we'll be giving the board updates on a quarterly basis with regard to how we're doing, you know, from a budget perspective, as we see our financials and we see how they go. But our goal is to certainly maintain our healthy fund balance.
Okay. And then our debt service fund is growing, and the numbers that you're showing us on page 18.
Yes, sir.
That takes into account the selling of the remaining bonds that we need to sell and lowering the INS tax rate 4 cents.
Yes.
And so we're still able to grow that. Okay, great. And then page 19. I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, but although the tax rate is going down, the only reason that people wouldn't see savings is because the value of their home went up.
Yes, yes, sir. If the value of their home is higher than that reduction of 2 net pennies, then they would still have a net increase. That's correct.
Okay.
But there are some folks that actually have the same value year over year. There are some that actually have less. And so they'll really, they'll really have a saving. So it's really across the board. I mean, this is the average, this is based on the average taxable value of residents. And so it does include a lot of the new homes that are going to be coming in, built in a lot of our neighborhoods that are more on the high-end side. And so that does, that is one of the reasons why that percentage is going up as much as, you know, 5.1%.
Mr. Bassett, is it my understanding that the legislature has based their school finance budget on 7% growth?
Yes, sir.
Across the state?
Yeah.
And so we, although we've had three years in a row of 10, over 10% property growth, this year, we suffered a precipitous drop to 5%. So we're at 2%. And what is the total CAD appraisal value roughly? Is it $39 billion for the Fort Bend political subdivision?
It's close to that, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So as you pointed out earlier, any little minor movement is quite significant.
Right. I mean, 1% of $39 billion is a big number.
Well, Dr. Dupree, I would just like to try to find a way, in addition to Mrs. Tasson's op-ed pieces, which she's done a very good job of writing, of letting people know that Fort Bend ISD has undertaken significant and, I'll say, drastic steps to become efficient. In years past, we terminated the Reading Recovery Program, which is a proven program that we'd had for 20 years or more. And we did that because it was just not cost-effective, and we've replaced it with another program. And we hope that it's going to be successful. But the proof is not out there yet. We haven't, it hasn't had enough time to work. But we've done that to live within our means. And the other thing that I would like all of our parents and community stakeholders to know, when we get these articles in the paper by children at risk, Robert Sanborn, who ranks every school in the state of Texas, and in our case, in Region 4, he's so good, he can do that without ever setting foot in the classroom. And yet, that taints all of our schools, and some good, some bad. But I really wish that he would have an opportunity to attend some high school graduations. I really wish he would have an opportunity to go to one of our Title I schools and read to the kids. I really wish he would have a chance to be a lunch monitor with other teachers while they're monitoring lunch. I really wish he'd have an opportunity to do many of the things that our teachers do, because if he did, he might change his mind about the good work that we're doing, and not just us, every other school district. So I think he really does a disservice to us. It's not helpful whatsoever. It's bad enough that we already have a state accountability system, A through F, that we're all going to be judged on. And, you know, there's a time limit. So if we can't get our schools moved out of IR in the allotted time, then the Commissioner of Education can tell all of us trustees to get off the dais and move into the audience with everybody else and appoint a board of managers. So we have a pretty big incentive. And even though we know that we really need a full day of high-quality pre-K, and we need all of these other programs that help our kids, I think we're doing a pretty darn good job with not a whole lot of support, either financial support, or emotional support, or any kind of support whatsoever from the state legislature. So I'm going to stop talking now, but I want to thank you and your staff for putting this together and going over a $750 million budget in 20 minutes. It's not easy to do. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We appreciate you stating many of those feelings that we as board members have. Are there additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, ma'am. Steve, I was just looking ahead again to 2018-2019 on page 16. So what you're saying is that if nothing changes, we're going to be in the hole for 11 and a half million, right, 2018? So we're going to have to pull more fund balance out of that, whatever's left.
Yes, sir. That's if we don't take any actions. That's right.
Okay. And then, at that point, what will, will we be below the 90-day requirement, or we're getting pretty close, or?
If we don't take any action, I do think we'd be below.
Steve, I think we need to be real clear, because you're saying if we don't take action. Our intent is to take significant action.
No, I understand it. But I'm just going to make sure I understand what this is showing here. So when you say taking action, you're looking at cutting costs somewhere?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that that's clear. So I just, again, so that's what we're seeing right here.
That's correct.
So if nothing changes, or expenses go way up, or something, then this 18-19 starts looking pretty bleak.
Right. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, at the end of 17-18, we would still be within policy by about $300,000. And then each successive year after that, obviously, we would be bringing, coming below policy if, again, no actions were taken.
Okay. Okay. And that's, when we say coming below policy, that's the board policy that says we have to have a 90-day fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. That's not a state law, is it?
No, sir. It's not. That's our board policy, but it's something that we benefit from in several ways, in terms of being able to have that cushion. It certainly helps us with our bond rating.
Oh, yeah, sure.
There's benefits to having that in policy.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. This is James.
Thank you. And thank you for preparing this three-year outlook. I know I asked for that because I just wanted to sort of see, you know, what that might look like, and really to have this conversation, Dave, just like you brought up, to say, okay, so we have to be real about this, because we can do this for one year, but then we've got to change something so that we can continue on. And I don't think it's the board's desire to go below the 90 days. And so I really appreciate you preparing this, and I realize that there's 1,000 variables that go into this. And so, you know, it's not your favorite slide to put out there, and I recognize that, Dr. Dupree. So, but I appreciate being shown the reality, so that we can see that, and so that our community can see that. So, thank you for that. And thank you for being, for working on the plan, for how we're going to either reduce the $12 million deficit that Mr. Rice was talking about, and then you've presented, and we're going to look to the future to how to reverse that. So that's what I've gathered from that part of the conversation. If we could go to, I have a clarification question on the fund balance.
This one or the one before?
That one's fine. That one's fine. So on the, when we're talking about using, I think it was $12 million from fund balance, we're talking about using it out of these committed funds, or amending the part of the committed funds titled economic stabilization. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to what's on Slide 13, which is the State Revenue Stabilization Fund?
Exactly.
We're not using that at this point.
We're not using that.
Okay. So that's counting in our 90 days?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're repeating yourself, but I'm just trying to clarify. I'm trying to make sure I understand it. So that's counting in your 90 days, and the funds we're actually going to use are in the line above that, in the committed fund balance section.
Yes, and no apologies needed. We look at this all the time, but we understand that you all don't. So it's not, it's not easy stuff.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I was ready to turn Brian's speed down a little bit, just so I could absorb the words. I was so stuck on Semper Gumby that I, and I was trying to be flexible and all, but I was struggling a little. Okay, so that's great. Thank you very much for that clarification. And then if we go back to the previous page, page 12. Between last year and this year, what I heard you say is the change in operating expenses that you're showing there is basically due to compensation increases, or nearly entirely due to compensation increases to our organization.
And staffing.
Excuse me?
And staffing as well.
And increases in numbers of personnel.
Right, right. We have the staff associated with enrollment growth, but also the staff associated with opening the three new campuses.
Okay. So I noticed that in your, in the pie chart, we're pushing on 88% benefits. And I don't necess, so, yeah, salary and benefits, which is, which is really, you know, we're creeping up quite high, which makes that, what to do about the future situation even trickier in my mind. Because, I mean, we have all these people, and we need them to teach our kids. So you certainly have your work cut out for you, as Mr. Rice has said. And I agree, Mr. Rice, our state legislature is not helping us at all. They don't seem to be in touch with the issues that we have in our local districts. They don't seem to recognize at all our foresight, or our good planning, or our conservative fiscal policies and procedures and tactics that we've been using. And it's very, very frustrating. And we become the bad guys, and we're not, when we're trying to serve the community and serve the public. So thank you for saying that in such a nice way. I wouldn't have been so bold as to call people out, but I appreciate, I think you called some important names that really have, haven't stood by us. So thank you for doing that. Getting back, though, to this, so what I understood you guys to say is that our campus budgets and our department budgets have not increased at all from last year to this year. And I don't know if they did from, in the previous year. Maybe there was a slight increase, no, the previous year. No increase the previous year, no increase this year, and we're struggling a little bit to see where we could do that in the future. So this becomes, I'm mentioning this as a concern, and I mentioned this to you the other day, Mr. Bassett, because the board has some plans. I mean, we have some exciting things we want to do, and some changes we want to make. And so I just don't know how we can accomplish that, accomplish our goals, if we are, if we're not helping our campuses in increasing their budgets, and certainly our departments, who are trying to develop these plans and put them into place. So it's just a concern that I would raise, and I don't know if staff has any comment on that, or?
Just if I may, I mean, I can make a couple of comments. There are things that we've done in the past, but also things that we're thinking about this coming year to save money. One of the things, you know, more centralized printing, those are things that we can do that can save money. But I, and I know that that'll save the campus some more, some funding. I don't see them scooping their budget for that. I see them then being able to use that in other ways as they see fit. So there are things we can do, strategic sourcing on office supplies and things like that, for example. So there are things that we've done and would continue to do to try to make sure that they're able to stretch their dollars as far as possible. And there's also a lot of benefits that we've realized from the enterprise function, because there's a lot of fundraising things that she's been working on that we're not seeing from a district perspective, but that is being realized at the campus level.
I'd add to that, too. And I appreciate you kind of bringing up Mrs. James's strategic perspective of this. And so what I would say is, we even began last week when I spoke to the principals about the idea that we will be on a regular basis talking about our budget. But I want to keep it in a, I'm just, you know, I'm an optimist. And this is a stressful, negative situation. But I believe we will still, and well, I just don't believe we will, continue to advance our strategic objectives. Sometimes you've got to get into strategic abandonment, abandonment of things that aren't working, to put more money toward things that do work. And we've got to be intentional in doing that. We've got to bring everybody along with strong communication, strong collaboration, and that's what we will be doing. Though I don't fear the next couple of years, a lot of people are going to be working really hard, and we're definitely going to be doing what Mr. Rice has asked, engaging this community, trying to get some angry parents to the Capitol to express their level of concern about this as well. But the bottom line is, our focus on the board's strategic planning and the vision and the mission for this district will remain at the forefront of what we do through every, every aspect of budget. I hate to say even reduction, but as we redeploy, as we rebalance our budget, if you will, to keep our focus moving forward for our students.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. And I appreciate that, Dr. Dupree, because we can't, the kids keep, you know, they keep growing, and the years go by, and there's no time to be lost. The need is urgent. So I agree with you. I don't, I don't wish to put our strategic vision aside, because the kids are counting on us to not do that. And so that, I guess, then I would, I recognize there might be, you know, difficult choices ahead in terms of how we reorganize, restructure, reallocate, you know, whatever all it is, to enable us to meet our strategic objectives. Because, and that's kind of why I'm bringing it up today, because we need to talk about it. It shouldn't be an elephant, or everybody shouldn't be wondering, gosh, what's going to happen? Are we doing this? Are we doing that? Where are we headed? I don't, I don't want us to fall into that situation where we're not clear on where we're headed. I want our organization to be very clear on what we're trying to do. So, thank you. And so, thank you all. Thanks, Mr. Bassett, to you and your team for preparing all of this. And my last final question, I guess, would be on the budget, on the, you didn't put a slide up there on budget assumptions, but in the booklet, there's, on page 16, there's a page of them. Are there any of these budget assumptions that are not fixed or not certain, besides the tax rate that we haven't voted on? Is there anything else that isn't fixed, or?
The one thing that isn't is the, we haven't received certified property values, but usually there's not much variance between the certified estimate that we get in April, and then the certified property values that we get in July. They're usually very, very similar. I never saw a huge swing in that.
So that's the $37.4 billion set?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's the net assess taxable, the 39 they were talking about, and that's on the, before the exemptions, the market level.
Okay.
But we get paid on what is taxable. And so that's why we include that number here.
Okay, I'm not certain if I understand that. But, so those, so that's really the only thing that's uncertain. The rest of these things are pretty fixed. Well, I guess enrollment, we're estimating. Okay, well, I'll look through that a little more carefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have additional questions? Mr. Board.
Yeah, once again,
Yeah, once again, it's, I greatly appreciate it is a well-presented finance information, and actually, I believe the page number 16, in my opinion, is the biggest thing, how we are planning for the future. And being said that, I can understand numbers, smaller numbers, so per student, you know, it says $8,405. So what was last year's per student? I know it went up. Do you have, do you know it all?
We have our hand. I think when we adopted, yeah, because that's, I mean, we calculate based on the estimate, but in terms of what we adopted?
And I could get it later. It's not a big deal. And so, so I'm sure it substantially went up from last year. Okay. And also, Mr. Quinn, you mentioned about moving that 1.5 million we put aside for transportation purposes, page numbers?
14.
14, yeah. So in the past, it was like a cushion we had, and so you realize that it is, we don't need it anymore, so we are going to take it away.
That is correct. Again, when we initiated the contract with Gold Star, we weren't absolutely certain what that would look like. Now that we've had a full, basically two years' worth of operations, we feel that budget is well-established, and those funds are no longer needed.
Okay, okay. And another question I have is, of course, based on what I'm hearing from all my fellow board members, Mr. Rice, and also James, and Mr. Rosenthal, everybody mentioned about communicating with the public. So I know this is a communication we are doing, but I don't know how many people are watching these things, you know? So what are the areas or avenues we are using to, this is something special people should know, and everybody's talking about it. So what are the things we are doing to let people know this is where we stand, and how ocean is messing up things, but still we are keeping everything above the water? And how we are, how we are communicating with the public, other than we are doing this particular meeting?
Veronica, why don't you jump in on that?
We have a couple of different communications scheduled to go over this, as well as updating the public on all of our previous discussions, the timeline moving forward. We have the magazine as one opportunity to go out to people who don't have students in our system, because our electronic communications go out to people who are in our system. So, and then we also have had conversations with getting our articles out to the publications and to the chambers of commerce, who also have a network of people that may not be connected to the system. So we have a communication plan. We've been working with Steve and his staff last week in particular, to go over some messaging on how to inform the public and keep them updated.
And are we using the local news media in this aspect?
Yes, they do run our press releases, and they do run all of our public notices that have to go out, and of course, we're open to comments and responses to other questions for the articles that they write themselves.
Sure, sure. Okay. I'm good, and I think it is a wonderful job you guys did, and, you know, well-explained. Thank you very much, especially for that long-term outlook. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. George. I'm going to round out with just a couple comments before we take public comment. First of all, Dr. Dupree, thank you for saying the term strategic abandonment, because I think that that's going to be critically important. I know I sent an email out earlier today, because I think it's going to be important to keep the board informed on what things we're looking at, cutting, or how we're going to strategically abandon certain things and still fulfill our strategic goals, which we're set to approve this month. So I appreciate you saying that, and I think that that's, it's going to be important that we keep an open line of communication, so that board members watch some of this process, and we feel comfortable moving forward. So thank you for that. One of the things I would suggest from a communication standpoint is maybe getting some, breaking some things down into some graphics, or to some very simple basics or bullets that we can publish for our community to see that, you know, this is, these are the things we're having to cut, or these are the areas where we are having financial challenges. I know you guys worked with me on a step-by-step graphic for vouchers to help people understand exactly the flow, and I think a lot of people, it's not just that they don't pay attention, but sometimes it gets, like you said, we don't look at this every day, and the public looks at it even less. So I think it's going to be critically important that we break it down to a few bullets or talking points for them to understand, because I was watching a Facebook thread the other day, where a lady was commenting that, well, all of our taxes go up to the state, and so that's why, what are you talking about? The state portion of the school funding is going down, because our taxes are our taxes, and whatever we pay is whatever we pay. They do not understand the school funding formula, and they do not understand that, they do not understand recapture, and that the state is taking money and not putting it back into education. And I don't think we can say it enough. I really don't think we can say it enough, or, you know, 10 different ways, however we can think of to say it, I think it needs to be said. I think Mr. Rice is correct. The only other thing I would point out before we move on is that, so you talked about the eight and 1/2 million dollars, I think, that we would have gotten, Fort Ben ISD would have gotten under House Bill 21, but that's the Senate's version of House Bill 21. Was that correct? The $52 million?
No, no, ma'am. That was, that was the House version.
The original House version, which was one, it was putting 1.8 billion?
Yes, ma'am.
Into school, and where the Senate cut that down to about 52 million.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? So, and in addition to that, it added a voucher program for students in special ed, which would have even further taken money out of education, which is something a lot of people don't understand.
That's right.
So while we hear some of our leaders at the state level talking about the House not voting for House Bill 21, which was, which would have put $52 million into schools, that was drastically cut by the Senate, right? I just want to make sure that people understand that. Right? And with the, so what, when I look at the governor's items in special session, I'm looking at a teacher pay raise that they're not going to fund, which increases expenditures for us. I'm looking at school choice for special needs students, which decreases revenue. I mean, it's going to take money out of public education. I don't know that people fully understand that, but it's going to take money out of public education. We're looking at rollback elections for property tax increases. Does that apply to the ISDs?
I don't think so, but I mean, we'll see. I mean, they could certainly broaden that.
It depends.
But right now, it's the focus on municipalities, but, you know, we do have the biggest piece of the property tax.
Right. So if it applies to us, that's going to increase expenditures for us as well.
Potentially.
Yeah. So I'm looking at things here that, I mean, the school finance reform piece, I find a little bit amusing, because House Bill 21, the House version of House Bill 21, did address some of that. Isn't that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and that was done away with by the Senate.
It did simplify some of the elements. That's right.
Right. And then now, the governor's asking for school finance reform, sort of a little too late. I mean, it's kind of after the fact.
Right.
We're already going to suffer for two years because of the lack of action on the part of the legislature, so. So anyway, I, you know, I appreciate you guys putting this forward. I especially appreciate you guys planning for the future and planning for these things to happen, and I think Steve Bassett owes me lunch.
Well, we'll see how this session, special session finishes out. I'm holding out.
Do we have questions or comments from the audience on the budget? Mr. Rodrigo, will you, Carrie On, will you step to the microphone, please, sir? Let's make sure it's on. Let's, is that, do we know, is that, let's make sure it's on, so that we get you recorded.
Okay, board, just one, my concern is, what is this? Oh, I came two years ago and gave you a sheet relating, which is Fort Ben, Fort Ben, and this is me, Darrell Carrie On, court, the Fort Ben ISD. So my concern is, is this costing the school district money and paying lawyer fees, private lawyers? Don't we have our, doesn't the county have their own lawyers? And, but there was this Pearl, Pearl Burton writer, let's see, like, and this is costing the school district, and making me bad, I don't know why. This relating taxes, it should be the tax collector problem, not the school district problem, because whoever is, what is this, collecting the taxes, it's not only y'all. That should be blamed, it should be others. That's what my concern, legal fees costing the people money, you know? But that's one thing for you actually looking correctly. It hasn't been signed by the, what's called, by the judge, but it's, what's this, I was never notified and put in there. It's just like, almost like, what's this, oh, like, what's going on over there in Washington? Are they trying to decaying me or something? Make me look bad? And I was never represented, and they named me here, what is this? A proxy answer, which I'm not, you didn't relate to.
So, Mr. Carrie On, your question is about, is about legal fees with tax? Okay.
The school district paying legal fees for private attorneys to speak for y'all? It should be the county speaking. Where are you going?
Yeah, so.
So there's no reason for legal fees be wasted by, or costing the school district or the county for paying, paying the private lawyers.
Thank you, Mr. Carrie On. Mr. Bassett, can you address the legal?
Yes, ma'am. So our, the outside counsel firm of Purdue, I remember the rest of their?
Brandon.
Brandon, and so there are delinquent tax attorneys, and they're the ones who help with tax collections. We do not pay them anything out of the budget that we've talked about here. Whenever they do collect delinquent taxes, and there's, they take monies out of those fees. What's more is, there's not really a way for school districts to necessarily bring that work in-house, where we do it on our own, and potentially, you know, save some money from an outside legal perspective. Those are, that's something that by law, we're not, we're not allowed to do, and so, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
The main point is that it should not only be the school district, it should be everybody else, like, the county should be listed, the, what is this, city or water district in my area, to my neighbor here, but it shouldn't just be one, so this is totally wrong. I don't know, it is probably just be paying to the back door or backpacket to these private lawyers for nothing, doing something for nothing. It doesn't make no sense.
Thank you, Mr. Carrie On. We appreciate you being here and for speaking today. Do we have any additional comments by the audience? Okay, hearing none, we will stand adjourned at 6:33 PM. Do the board members need a few-minute break? Or do we all want to go right into the board meeting? Okay, let's go right into our board meeting. Do y'all need to shuffle?